I would say what the biggest thing is in our agencies, in our community, is just getting them on board to go with the plan, to kind of build that new team. That's, we talked about this significantly, is that there's just some people that are just not going to want to go to a new organization. There's others that are going to embrace it and they're going to love it, and others are going to, you know, maybe be a little bit resistant to change. This is a consolidation timeline. They broke it out into four phases for us. These four phases are not, they could be overlapping. The government set, the project set up, the governance and financial planning, that has to be, that would be the immediate order at the beginning of this plan. Phase two and phase three and phase four could be overlapping each other significantly as we're going through this plan, which could take, you know, the plan they have is going for about three to four years, what they put as a timeline for us. But they put in dates that we can change those dates and then work it out so that, you know, it's a five-year plan that works if it's, you know. I don't see us doing this ever like in six weeks or anything. This is going to be several years. There's going to be a lot of discussions, there's going to be a lot of research done to find those answers out. One of the things that we talked about is, you know, we've used MCP for this initial project plan, you know, hiring another company like MCP again to help carry us through would be a recommendation that we, was a recommendation from that executive team. You know, as a conclusion here, I know that so far, two-thirds of our executive team changed. We had a city form of government change during this project, and so we hope that we can provide the information to you so that a decision could be made. And we know that there's a lot of challenges here to still address, but as we, as we implement the plan, we'll have the opportunity to address those challenges and make a plan that our agencies can support and our agencies could work with us to, to solve those technology issues, governance, and the workflows that are needed so that the right person can be contacted and sent to the right place with the right information so that our friends, our neighbors, our families know that the right service is going to get to them. That's all I have for my presentation. I know the executive team is going to make some comments, and so I will step aside.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to go first?
I'm done. Is there questions or y'all stand there for?
I have one.
Yeah?
Can you go back to the constraints of the single point of failure because of the fiber network, which may be costly to mitigate?
So currently, there's only one source of fiber coming into our valley to bring Internet services, and that also is right now for our current 911 configuration from the selective router. So if a farmer digs it up along the highway, we lose 911 service for our community.
So when we talk about like the ports project and how this is going to take a few years, that's, we need to bring them in to collaborate to make sure we've kind of got, we're already mitigating it as we're moving through it.
Yep, that's exactly what's going on, is Dave Taylor's very involved on that part of the project, because we know that with those connections, that brings that redundancy so that calls can be routed around any kind of single point of failure on that.
Bill, I went to one of the meetings in Boise a couple of years ago, and they talked about dispatch centers and a lot of conjecture on one of the school shootings that they had, about if they'd had a dispatch center that was functional in that area, it might have saved more lives and time. Is there any data on having these centers and response time that they, they may have and how it saves lives or any of that?
That would probably be more of a question for the executive team. I know that we have paid for training for our dispatchers to go attend active shooter training classes, and that, we feel that's a very important part of some of the funding we do with the Joint Powers Board is making sure they have the proper training if those, if those situations happen to occur. That's, that's probably what, after paying for the technology, that's probably the very next thing is training for dispatchers to be ready for stuff.
Is there someone from the board that would like to respond to that comment? You don't have to, I just want to give Chairman Beck the courtesy if there's somebody else out there.
On the response time?
Sheriff Scrimshaw.
Question on your response time, I don't have the exact numbers for that. I know when we started dispatching for the tribe, from what they had previously, they said it reduced their call time by about two minutes, and so there is quite a bit of quicker response when it's coming from one, because we were having to transfer to another agency that they were being dispatched from, so they really appreciate that part. So that's the only experience I have on the call, frequency time.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah, there's quite a number of case studies.
I should ask you to introduce yourself for the record too, please.
Oh, sure.
Whenever you speak, thank you.
The, I mean, there's a lot of data out there.
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brett Hubbard, Mission Critical Partners.
Thank you.
Okay. As, as Bill mentioned in this report, really sort of the preparation and conception of events, you know, shootings, school shootings, et cetera, is what needs to be prepared for, and taking into consideration infrastructures, interoperability, wireless communications, cellular communications, who responds where, what kind of calls get taken where, and dispatch where, you know, it's getting those resources to the right place as quickly as possible to, to solve an issue. And, you know, quite certainly, a project like this, that's going to have that primary goal in mind. In a worst-case scenario, like a school shooting, you want to get those resources there as quickly as possible to stop, you know, and that's generally the goal and, you know, but it's not always what's existing. So defining, defining what should exist and figuring out what it's going to take to get there is, is really the path. But there's, you know, plenty of examples of where systems failed and where they were fixed and then were able to work functionally again. So that's something that, you know, that we take into consideration in, you know, making suggestions and improvements, et cetera, so.
If you don't mind, could you step back up there? I have a question for you. Okay, in your professional experience, a project like this usually takes, what, four to five years?
Give it, give it.
Give or take a little.
Give or take a little.
And?
Best case.
Everybody has cooperated and worked collaboratively to get to the same point, correct?
One would hope, correct, yes.
Okay. So with your outfit, with your consulting firm coming into this, and when you looked at our executive team and how we handled everything going forward, questions, HR, all of this stuff, based on that, give us, give me your best estimate of a timeframe from hiring a manager or a project manager till we can come, get through the steps. It says three, four years or whatever it was, but I think we can do this a lot quicker, myself, simply because we have good boots on the ground and know how to handle things. So based on that and what you had talked to the executive team, give me your best estimate, because I think we could do it quicker, quickly.
Not being on the project?
Two, two to three years, tops.
I mean, if that's the goal, that can be discussed. If I was to just be outside looking in and looking at other projects we've done, success usually happens four to five years. Can it be done sooner? It all boils back to the, your group, and if there's collective buy-in and will, certainly. You know, that, that can occur, and it's, you know, it's really a five, 10, and 15-year kind of projection on this, to really see the benefits in the five to 10-year period is, is what's going to happen. You know, you've got good people here, but, you know, like myself, we're getting older, we retire, we do different things, and you want to leave a solid foundation as a, as an infrastructure, you know, for other good people to come in, you know, keep getting good people in. That's going to help that process. You're going to attract better people, and you're going to create a, a better environment that can respond to the community and so forth. But that's ambitious, I would say, two to three years, you know, but at the same time, I think on the outset, it's, it should be at least five, you know, on the, on a worst-case scenario. But if, if, if you get, the sooner you get going, the sooner you're going to get, get at it, and, you know, so.
Thank you.
All right.
So to that timeline, Bill had mentioned that the executive team had determined that building a new facility was the best rate to go, which would add time, I'm assuming. Can you just describe, what does a dispatch facility need to look like? Because as we're city council getting into budget season, we're also talking about consolidation of our buildings, maybe if there's something that you can describe?
Well, you don't want to see them. You don't want them visible, you know, so ideally, you want them in a, in a pretty secure, you know, location that's not going to flood or be subject to weather, you know, it's typically, you know, we, we want them resilient and nondescript, but, you know, from a consolidation standpoint, when you really look at both the, you know, facility and the technology, as Bill was mentioning, you know, really reducing, you know, the redundancies and the duplicating, duplication of systems being, you know, radio infrastructure, CAD, call handling equipment, you know, next-gen 911 capabilities with, with the state that, that are going to be coming up, and, you know, the, the people needed to, to acquire and, and implement and train and manage those systems, you know, it's, it's immense, and it, you know, it's a, it's a big ask. So that, that center, once fully operating, you have, you have two good centers right now, but it's difficult to staff them. They have, they're expensive to, you know, acquire systems and, and equipment for, but once fully implemented and, and, you know, with a good response program, you know, it's, it's going to be something that everybody's going to look back on and say, how did we do it the other way, I think, based on the data that we've seen? So hopefully that helps. But you want them secure, you want them somewhat remote and, and safe, you know. That answer the question?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chalmers.
Yeah.
I, I haven't seen anything that's going to say, bottom line, when this is done, how much we're going to be paying for this, and, because that's going to be an important thing for, for constituencies, both sides, of, of pitch in this. And so I, I'd like to get a sense of what this is going to look like, and it, it said funding may be a challenge. I mean, is there funding already available? And how much is going to be coming from the county, how much is going to be coming from the city? I, I guess I need to have an understanding of that.
In the plan, Steve Haberman, who, he's online too, so I don't know if he wants to pipe in, but he, he had kind of a, a method to calculate like the square footage. I'm, I'm trying to remember what number he came up with, but, you know, those numbers are actually from last summer. I think we were looking like the four to $5 million range. The technology side, one of the things is, is because of our partnership with Leighton-Louis County, we're able to apply for state grants to help us if, if we upgrade our technology. And then the 911 funds that we have locally can also be used for the, those portions of the communication center.
Okay.
Bill?
Hey, Bill, this is Steve, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Just in regards to those construction costs, I think you're in the ballpark, and one of the things that we have seen across the country is, and it's gotten a little bit better, but since COVID happened and the supply chain issues happened, the square footage costs to do hardened facility construction have continued to increase substantially. And you're part of the country, and I, I have to go back and look, but I think I did do an outreach to an architect, and you, we're probably talking $600 to $700 a square foot at least for hardened facility construction. So for the size of operation that you're having there, you know, 5,000 square foot, depending on what type of administrative space and office space you need, is a, is a roundabout number that makes sense to start with, especially if you're able to co-locate it with something else that's existing. We had looked at some existing facilities when we toured there, you know, obviously if it's something that you're retrofitting, it's cheaper than building from the ground up, but it's still, as Brett was saying, you know, it's not like you're putting up just a general purpose office building. It needs to be able to withstand the weather, you know, withstand the elements, be hardened, and, you know, especially out there, if you're in, even in fault, earthquake territory, to be watching for those things.
Commissioner Havens?
Brett, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You know, I don't know how long you've been doing this, with your firm and stuff, but I imagine, and I'm probably going to answer part of my own question, in your phases, one, two, three, four, Bill's outline here, at some point during this process, and I don't know if it's happened before, you see, yeah, there's going to be a problem, we're going to have a problem, wherever it's at. The two things, I wondered if these are maybe the most common, is the governance board and the financial planning, it's labeled there, you know, the funding of it. Early in the process, so this is like the first nine months, Bill has penciled out your first nine months, would you say that's a fair statement within those first few months? You see, oh yeah, we're going to have a problem here.
I think that came up before we even started work with you folks, was, you know, the importance of governance and getting that in place upfront. I mean, it's just, it's, it's really critical to the projects, because if it's not in place and things, you know, start heading sideways, you don't have anything to refer back to, so.
And that's when, do you, have you ever thrown in the towel and said, we just can't get through this?
Personally, no, but, but, you know, there, there could be examples where that happened, you know, and, and, I mean, it's a good indicator, if you're not getting through your, your agreements on governance, that you're not going to have a successful project too, so, you know, it's, it needs to be done early on, you know.
Yeah, I can see why that's step one or phase one or whatever.
The follow-up to that, so, can you, how does, how have other consolidations worked? I mean, when you have that body of entities, there, is there a mathematic equation of who gets, you know, the most votes, and you throw balls in and you do a lottery, or do we flip a coin between the city and the county? Because that's, I think, where historically, we, you know, we can, we can sit at the table, but somebody's got to make a move, and that's where I feel like these, that's why we're, we're here right now and not in step two.
Hey, Bonnie, are you there? I'm like speaking to the cloud here.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, did you hear that question?
I did. My name is Bonnie Maney, I'm the Operations Domain Manager with Mission Critical Partners. The folks that, you know, did the report for you, Steve and Stacy and Gigi, they, you know, actually report to me. I appreciate the question, and it, it is a challenging one, but the, the important thing about governance is while there are models around the country, it really does depend on what, what works for you. There is, a lot of times, of course, and I think as you're experiencing, there is a concern about loss of local control. And what we ask in those types of times is, a lot of that is based on a, on, on speculation, if you will, of what there is perceived to be lost, and rather looking down the road and see what actually possibly has the ability to be gained. Bill mentioned a few of those things, consistency through community of 911 services and, and things like that, which were really, really important. But at the end of the day, when it comes to governance, the important thing is that we would be working with you to determine what exactly is the best for, for your, you know, your region and, and your constituents, to make sure that they get consistent 911 services and, and dispatch throughout. But there are models, there are ton, you know, several models out there. There's a 5,500-plus PSAPs in the country, public safety answering points, and there's about that many flavors of governance as well. Important thing is what is going to work for you.
Counselor Specklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess for Bill, on this, you had this list here that shows all the counties, Lewis County, the tribe, Leighton, so are they going to be considered in sharing the cost of this, or is it the blunt of it, the city and Nesper's County?
Initially, the discussion was, is that we develop it, develop it locally between the two agencies to have one consolidated center, and then as part of the governance and the setup is like, how do we bring in other entities if, if they so choose to join in with us? There, there's a lot of questions there, because our state 911 doesn't explain how fees should be handled, kind of puts the fees at the, at the plate of the commissioners, and so how would a board down here in Lewiston, with maybe one representative from that county, you know, use those fees? We'd have to make sure that we are complying with the state code on that. I think the, the idea was those get our eggs in a basket, and then we go forward, and then, but we design it with the idea that if someone wants to come on or, or, you know, Lewis County or Leighton County, that here's the process that they would buy into the, into the system.
Because what I see is if it came down to a property tax, the Lewiston residents would be paying the city and the county.
If, if.
So the blunt of the whole system.
Yeah, with two systems, that's what happens right now, yeah. And, and just to let you know too, is we do share our back room equipment, the software, hardware for our 911 system is shared between Lewis, Leighton, and Sperson, and the city of Lewiston, and that's one of the ways we qualify for grants through the state is we, we do a consolidated system. These systems can handle like 400, you know, call taker positions, so they're very robust systems in. Right.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have a question, but I know this, this group is kind of looking for the green light moving ahead, or where we have to stop, or yellow, or whatever, but the county has made a commitment that we believe this is the way to go. We just don't see, and it's reflective in our inability to fill all our positions. We're just, everybody's working way more than they should be working, lots of overtime, lots of hours. And well, there's some other stuff too that I don't want on the record, but it just, and I know the cities have the same kind of issues. So I don't, I don't really see that getting any better. So, I mean, it's either, it's either look at something new or, you know, tread water and continue down the same old path, so, and hope for something better, which I don't really see that happening, at least not for quite a while. We, you know, we've met with you before on this, this is nothing really new. I guess maybe some things that do have changed, maybe, is the commitment that other communities are making towards this type of endeavor. There's more interest, there's more buy-in to it. I mean, we're all asking questions, because we don't know exactly how it's going to, you know, shake out and how it's going to work, but as we see more and more communities struggling to fill dispatch-type positions, and struggling with, you know, emergency responses and stuff, they're looking for an alternative, and this is what we think is the way to go. So I don't want to speak for my seatmates here, but we're, we're asking the city, you know, to give it that same kind of consideration and then ask, you know, what is the next step, and where do we go, and, and how best can we serve the citizens? Not just in our communities, but all these other communities that are involved with us.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'll, I'll ask a question, I don't know who is just able to answer it, but, or maybe just comments. So let me go back to the bullet point about establishing a single employer of record. So could somebody provide just a little bit more detail what that means? Because above that, we talked about governance and management, we talked about a business plan for the two PSAPs, but what does employer of record really mean legally?
So that would be the organization that would provide the benefits, the, you know, make sure they got their pay, insurance, their retirement systems all set up through them. They would maybe use HR as part of their organization. So the discussion was, and we went through this exercise, but we did not choose an employer of record, we felt that would be for a governing board to choose, but, you know, we looked at like City of Lewiston's benefits of wages, we looked at Nesper's County's benefits of wages, we looked at the regional, what, what's being supplied, and the consensus was, is whatever we pick, we want to make sure it's best in class, we want to make sure that we're able to get them the best wages and the best benefits. So an agreement would have to be made with that organization, whether it be the city, the county, or they create their own independent group to, to handle those administrative functions of employment, and that would be who manages that portion of the, of the, that organization.
So let's get down to the brass tacks then. When it comes to making decisions, who's going to make the decisions?
Well, that's the Joint Powers Board. That's the, part of that governance structure is for the Joint Powers Board to be granted the authority to make those decisions on behalf.
But what does that mean? That means that the county has one vote and the city has one vote, is it, is it distributed based on all the partners? How is that decided?
The three, the, they, they recommended a five-person board, which would then the chief of police, the county sheriff, the fire chief, the, somebody from the city, the mayor, and then a commissioner. And that would be the organization that would start making those initial decisions on governance and on like the employee of record, how funding and financing, you know, would it be a population based, would it be a call-based? You know, that there's, you know, that this initial group, that in that phase one, that's those questions they would be answering. And, you know, we, we, we would be comparing apples to apples when we tried to look at those benefits, you know, and we'd have to also look to see, you know, would the city be willing to be that employer of record, would the county be willing to be that employer of record? And so you, those are all those things that have to be ironed out through agreements, and that board would be making all those agreements.
I apologize if you've already prepared that, but do you have that diagram or that handout you can share with the council?
With the, what the board would look like?
Yeah.
It's in the, it's in the plan.
Implementation plan, secondary. And I apologize, I'm not good at knowing.
Well, that's the big plan.
If I'm not feeling one here, doesn't have a copy of that, or at least not at my fingertips now, then.
It's not the, it's not the handout Bill just gave you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, they, they just put boxes, it's in the.
Sometimes a picture's worth, you know, a thousand words, I think, so.
They streamed this down from like 35. This is like the major governance milestones. This is how, this is, this was just a suggestion made by MCP and the executive team at that time.
Bill had said that he reduced the amount of pages for this presentation and just, you know, for brevity, and it turns out he screwed up, so.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Can I, are you-
Counselor Letke.
Just again, so when we talk about best in class and benefits, I completely agree. And I, I think that a compensation package for people in law enforcement, first response, goes beyond time off, wage. We have to incorporate mental health, trauma care, self-care, things of that nature, and we've discussed that as a board. However, I think we are in a situation on both sides in the sense that we're stretching every dollar to try not to tax our residents anymore. So I keep going back to the next-generation 911 bill and other legislation that could help us bring that to fruition sooner through that cell phone use and other, where we can collect those charges and increase that funding. Because again, I do think when we look at this and we're looking at long-term and benefiting our residents, and when we think about, okay, there's all those entities, we're bringing in all that revenue, we are now consolidated and compacted to where we're not needing, you know, 15 dispatchers here and four here and three here, and we can bring that together. We still need to pay them well. So is that something that, while this discussion, while that boards forming, I mean, you said we're, the legislation's not ready. Can it be? I mean, we have state legislators, we have six available to us, that we could be pushing this through right now?
Well, we, they just received some information that basically the governor's office kind of just, it's not going to be one of their priorities. We just found that out like today.
And I appreciate that it's not his priority, but there's three legs of government and one is the body of 105 people.
Well, the IPSCC is underneath the Department of I O E M, and I O E M pushed it forward. I don't know if it was a priority for them or not, but we've been asked through IPSCC that all legislation goes through that channel. Now, if we can get a legislature, a legislator that can push the right buttons, man, go for it, because we just keep, Idaho just keeps kind of falling behind while the other states are.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor.
So I've heard a lot of support for it, and I know in the past our chief of police has been against it. I was wondering if it would be appropriate to hear from him and his side of what his thoughts about this. He's willing to.
Chief, are you willing to take the stand?
Yes, sir. Your honor.
Anything you say will be used against you.
Well, Commissioner, you will not be underwhelmed. I have a slideshow of 185, so you will not be disappointed. Jason Cusick, Lewiston Police Chief. Counselor, yes. I am not supportive of this plan overall. Granted, I am new to the area and have only come up, but I've reviewed it in depth several times. I think some of the questions that came up, I have some talking points that might kind of put a little more clarity on it and just spur probably more discussion more than anything. Some business, business, business concerns, excuse me, I swear I'm not drinking, it was just water. Starts with operational. I just kind of go over some basic facts. Mind you, pretty much everything I'm talking about came under, came out of this consolidated plan. So this is nothing independent research, I haven't made anything up. These are all just the numbers out of that final plan. They researched data. So from 2019 to 2021, the City of Lewiston handled 164,031 calls for service, while the county handled 7,031. That's a 23% difference, or 23 times difference between just those two agencies.
Chief, can I ask you a question about that? Are those emergency calls or admin calls?
That includes non-emergency, administrative, and 911.
I think that's where we, we kind of are comparing apples to apples.
This comes right out of the study that was commissioned. These are literally quite cut and paste from the line. So again, it's non-emergency, administrative, and 911 calls. The vast majority of calls, basically, and it kind of goes back to, I think, what the mayor is talking about operationally, if we have a five-member panel, even though the city handles 23 times the call volume, we're going to get one vote. In regards to anything procedurally, anything involving the center, we will have one vote out of that. And to me, basically, I define that as equity and not equality. One other concern I do have is that if any other dispatchers come into this dispatch center, they're going to understand that their call volume is now going to go up 23 times. So for every call they basically handle now, even go on the low end and say it's 15 times, for every one call they handle today, they need to understand that's actually going to go 15 times for this new center coming into it. And I know it was talked about call transfers. Speaking to our communication manager right now, there's a very low number of calls that transferred out. She said she roughly estimates about three to four a month, roughly come in where it's, oh, we got to get routed. About a month ago, I was in our dispatch center just talking to our dispatchers, hanging out, and a call came in. When the dispatcher came in, you know, right away, hello, Lewiston 911, what's the nature and location of your call? It was Clarkston. As soon as it said that, I looked at my watch. From the time he made that call, and then he goes, I'm going to make the transfer and I'm going to stay on the line until it picked up. When he hung up, that was about 10 to 12 seconds. So that whole thing was about 15 seconds, from the time he picked up and said 911 to when Clarkston picked up and they were able to transfer that call. So when the calls do come in, they get transferred very quickly. And basically, talking to everybody that I can within dispatches, there's been no data anywhere, no data points where these transfers have resulted in any kind of tragic or unfortunate ending. If we move into a consolidated plan, our dispatchers help out with a lot of record management stuff. So that's going to cause the department to handle higher one, potentially two more records personnel to take up the slack from that, because they assist with a lot of paperwork. Again, kind of go back to that HR and finance thing, that's another big question. We don't know how or who's going to handle that, and that's going to be issues with pay, schedules, collective bargaining, training, seniority, policy procedures, development, discipline. And one hand, I know we're all struggling. Commissioner, you mentioned that. Everybody across the country, this is not a new problem. There really is no competition, because honestly, nobody's applying for these jobs. We haven't had an application come through our building in a minimum of six weeks, at least for dispatch, if not longer. And I can't imagine the county's probably any different. So it's not like we're cannibalizing each other. And again, kind of who's going to handle that? Right now, we're currently staffed with eight people with two part-timers. We're authorized for 15. The county, I know, has five and one part-time, I believe, currently?
Seven.
Okay, which is still probably way understaffed anyways, right?
Yeah, we can have ten, nobody around here.
So this plan calls for 21, 29 to 31 to staff it. The turnover rate for consolidation, they're estimating to be about 25%. So when you walk into the building, we're potentially going to be down 25% of our dispatchers. Plan calls for reduction in turnover, but that is, again, mere speculation. We don't know. A lot of, there's a lot of things in here that are speculation. Again, this plan is almost like, can it be done? Yes. Should it be done? I don't know. Right now, comparing to Whitcom, they're starting at $28.33 an hour. Our top out at Lewiston right now is 26.11. They don't have enough bodies up there, and they're struggling with manning. And their top out is over $2 more than our, their starting is over $2 now more than our top out pay. I spoke to some other department heads that are part of Consolidated Dispatch, one of me, Bev and Kooten, I. I won't quote him, his exact verbiage, but let's just say he is not a fan of it up in that area. A lot of it is because he feels he doesn't have the ability to manage it for his own agency. I also made a few other agency department heads. It was a mixed bag, some liked them, some didn't. So, but not an overwhelming majority going, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. Biggest problem they anticipate, and this is what I see too, is the homogenation of all the protocols. There's nothing agency-specific. We all have to agree to protocols, we all have to agree to everything. It all has to be changed. We all will have to change probably to accommodate one dispatch center. Not undoable, but again, we're changing the way we're doing business, and we have for, you know, quite a long time. And that's where we would lose, exactly, each agency would basically lose their ability to adapt and manage their dispatch center, and it's going to be replaced with a bureaucracy. Changes, updates will move from a meeting, a phone call, a potential email, to being an agenda item. There's no flexibility to make changes or implement protocols for Lewiston Police, Nesper's County, or any other potential agency that might join. Whatever's done has to work for all agencies. The dispatcher's going to have to know this, and if there are any nuances, when they come onboard or they log in for the day, they're going to have to know all those little nuances, if they exist, per agency. For current employees right now, the morale of the Lewiston Police Department would suffer greatly, because there is absolutely zero support for this in-house, and that includes all dispatchers, and I haven't heard any patrol officers approve it either. An offside location, I think, would also greatly reduce and not allow officers to visit, which would allow for engagement and building camaraderie between dispatch and patrol officers. And again, going back to that seniority, page 36 states, fear of loss of seniority are unfounded, except they are going to have to have seniority places. Somebody's going to have to work graveyard. Somebody's going to, somebody's going to be upset and disappointed, but, you know, the plan says there won't be any fears of that, and I disagree, because I think there will be absolutely. Fiscally, cost and location is unknown. For the study, the building is between $600 and $800 a square foot, and again, they're recommending the plan set of 5,500 square foot. That also does not include neck, two-neck-tall new technologies, relocating existing technologies, technology and system integration, backup power supply, which is both the building generator and the UPS backup for our supplies. For context, a year, a year ago, Lewis Police Department contracted for a new building generator, and that was a quarter of a million dollars. That was 12 months ago dollars. I'm guaranteeing that's going to be a lot more. At a 650 square foot, and that's conservative, I would say right now the building, just the building, would be $3.575 million. And listen to what happened in the fire department, how quickly those rates, those prices rose. So you can guarantee that's probably close to that $5 million range that the gentleman online talked about. Realistically, I can't see any other need other than some kind of public financing for this. The annual cost and cost sharing is not equal, and the higher burden will shift to Lewiston. Per the plan, approximately yearly salaries and benefits would equate to $2.319 million. And again, the plan calls best in class, like we said, the plan says straight up, the highest pay is Lewiston, that's what they would equate to. So that would be the Lewiston pay rate for our dispatchers is what would be best in class, unless a higher compensation plan was approved by the board. If that being the case, right now, approximately, if a fully funded staffer, the Lewis Police Department is $1.12 million. Consolidated, just between LPD and the county, LPD's contribution would then rise to $1.789 million. If more agencies come onboard, and according to the plan, they plan for LPD, the county, Moscow, and the Tribe, the contributions would then be 1.2, which is still over $100,000 more. Moscow is definitely not coming onboard to talk to the chief. As of yesterday, I know the Tribe is contracting with Motorola, looking for an entire dispatch center. So they may not be coming onboard either. They may just go to self-dispatching per, as of yesterday's conversation with them. Again, best-in-class wages, I touched on that. That's a moot point, I figured that out. And then ultimately, there are some alternatives I've thought of and I think might work, other than just trying to go to an entire consolidated plan. One of them is, it's not the best, but I'm saying maintain the status quo is one option. Another one is, the police department, we are researching for a new police facility, which means also much larger space for dispatch. We could run a hybrid model, where ourselves and the county sheriff's come in, we will have plenty of seats, we would, right now, the, we could run, whatever that is, we could run those same consoles, buy them all once, put them in the building, but that way we at least have operational control over our independent dispatchers. We'd also be in our own room, we'd have those advantages of having that inter-agency engagement. If a critical incident happens, we're all in the same room, but I think that could be a very viable option and probably much more cost-effective. And then we could contract with any other potential agencies that want to come onboard. I think, and to share a story, so for example, right now, I think a lot of technologies exists right now for like with scanning with radios. When we thought we had that active shooter at the Lewiston Police, or at the Lewiston High School, the county sheriff's office came in full force, and we never talked to them. They were scanning our radio channels, knew we had a critical incident. So it's not like there is this disparity or of information or sharing. The technology exists and it's there. And that would only get more robust as new technology comes onboard and we can do that. Another example, like my prior agency, when I was working graveyard as the watch commander, that's when the Route 91 shooting happened in the Mandalay Bay. My, again, dispatch centers kept in contact with each other. I got a phone call to explain the situation, I'm scanning their channels, what exactly was going on, I can immediately make a decision, got moving. Dispatch, we have this ability to talk to each other and get resources deployed and happening very quickly. So those are really overall my concerns. That's why I think there's other models in play that could be a little, that could accommodate. I think overall, the themes and ideas that the Consolidated wants to accomplish, I think we're still giving each agency more operational control over themselves, so. That's about it. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you, Chief. Counselors.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Bill, I have a quick question. Chief Cusick, product funding, so when we talk about whether it's consolidated or sitting in the same room with each other, where's the money coming from that you're talking about?
Well, it could come out of, well, there'd be several different pipelines of money. There'd be, of course, the 911 fees that could support the technology, and then some staff. Then there'll also be the fees that would have to come from, whether it's calculated by calls or service, and you wouldn't want to go off that $100,000 number for the calls for service. You probably want to stick to the 911 calls for service, not administrative calls. And then you'd base it off that. I think it's kind of a standard model across the nation is, you know, you, you take, we need this pot of money, you look at the calls, you divide it out, and you kind of calculate from there how much a call costs, and then you reevaluate year to year.
As far as the emergency calls for service to answer, the same type here, there is 909 at the sheriff's office and 20,116 at Lewiston PD, and that's just emergency. So we still have roughly a 20x difference, so.
It's twice. Is it 9,000 or?
900. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
My glasses aren't set right. I'm just going. The 2022 numbers are-
So Bill, let me ask you a question while you're reading your papers. So not to play dumb, maybe I don't know everything. So the E911 fees are coming from where and how are they distributed?
The 911 fees are the $1.25 that are being paid by each one of, anybody owns a phone line, VoIP, cellphone, landline. If you're buying like track phones, those are submitted to the state, then just redistributed out by population to the counties.
So they're collected by the state and then they're redistributed to-
Just the track phones. The others are directly paid to Nesper's County.
Track phones are quarterly by population.
Quarterly by population, and VoIP is usually quarterly too.
So the city gets none of that money today?
No, it's, and then the way the city gets it is just through the Emergency Communications Joint Powers Board, that agreement between the city and the county for that. So, you know, and like I said, it's, we basically share the same system, so part half of it is actually over the city, half of it's over the county, and that provides some redundancy there. So if the system goes down on one side, it still can take phone calls at the other side. So the 2022 numbers, I was just going to show.
Time to upgrade, Bill.
I know.
Want me to help you, Bill?
So you have 21 to 840, it says. 9470, non-emergency, to 159306. Part of the non-emergency, I believe those are transferred in off the tree.
Okay, well, counsel, Commissioner Havens challenged us a little bit here. If you're looking for some guidance, for some help, you don't have to take action tonight. It is labeled as an action item. But it's your decision if you're ready to commit to something tonight or motion on something, whatever. If not, then I would suggest that we schedule another meeting soon so that we can provide some clarity to our chief and to the county on what your preferences might be moving forward. But we do need to get a firm answer on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Counselor Shaner, or Commissioner Shaner?
No matter what happens, we should all look at this as an opportunity. No matter what was stated, it's an opportunity in my mind. We got two systems, we paying a lot of money for two systems. We go to one system, we can look at the entire structure of things and make some common sense decisions. To me, it's an opportunity. To me, it's an opportunity, not a negative, an opportunity. Any comments brought forward during all these subcommittees, if we go that route, we'll be thoroughly vetted. It's an opportunity, not a negative. Please look at it as an opportunity, let's get a project manager onboard and move down the road and get a project started. It's an opportunity, not a negative.
Counselor Littkey?
I agree that it's an opportunity, and I appreciate the honest conversation we're having here, and I think that what Chief Cusick has done is allowed us to look at, okay, let's, let's look at these issues, let's try to mitigate them and then pivot. I think that that's something that we need to all realize that's gonna have to happen. A new facility makes me go, especially after the city's kicked several cans down the road on several options. My question is, is do we need a project manager right away, is that the action item, or is it that, could the joint powers board, because I feel like that's a very good group of well-educated people in what we're talking about. I really like that we have representation from the dispatch team there, like Tori, who can come and say, "These are the things we're facing," so that maybe we can start mitigating those things. So is that something that we direct that that board meet more than quarterly, where we have action items of trying to figure out these issues, and then really come back to the next joint meeting with, "Here's what a project manager will do for us," and we fully support that? Or is it that we have to create this whole separate, you know, grow one more little group over here that has to meet? Because I feel like that joint powers board has what it takes to get a lot of this stuff answered, to do the research, and it has it within its own body, a lot of expertise with Bill and Dave, and dispatchers there to say, "Here's what we're facing, here's what we've seen work," and then we can come back to the body as a whole and say, "We've actually made some movements," even to the point of facility research. But at this point, I agree, we need to move forward, because we're, we are at the end of a rope as far as, we lose one more dispatcher, what that does to the rest that are left, it's like failure to thrive. Once you hit a certain weight, you're not coming back, and people start to lose the mental capacity to be able to hold on to the pressures of that job. So my focus is on making sure our dispatchers know that we are there, that every decision we're making is to make sure that they can do their job and do it well. And I feel like that's where the focus should be, and then grow, and then invite other areas. Love that they're interested, but we've gotta figure that out first.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner?
I appreciate the chief coming up there, and it doesn't bother me at all to hear that list of concerns. I mean, I'm sure there was a lot of notes being taken, and probably a few ideas that were popping into people's heads about the concerns that were expressed. I mean, there was quite a few of them, and some of them I think we've heard over and over again, and most of them I don't think insurmountable. I mean, I'm sure they come up in other consolidations, and Brett could, you know, talk us through some of that if we wanted to, you know, keep him here all night. You know, the one that kinda bothers me a little bit is that prior to Chief Cusick being here, the previous chief, we had what sounded like buy-in by the dispatchers then, and so then, you know, overnight, it flip-flops the other way. So that's a little bit concerning, because stuff like that doesn't just happen, especially when you're talking about the same people. So I don't know exactly what happened there, and I don't need to speculate on it, but my experience has been that change is hard, it's hard. We do some of the same things over and over and over, you get comfortable, you follow procedure, you know, it's the same way every day, you know what to expect. And so when you ask people to change, look at a different model, yeah, nobody likes that. No, it's, I don't wanna learn that again, and I don't wanna try and remember where I need to go every day, because I gotta go to a different spot, whatever it is. I can tell you that, in my experience, when I've had opportunities to get in on the ground floor, and I'm specifically thinking about a facility that started in Seattle, that is an opportunity. You get in on the ground floor, there's questions about seniority and hire dates and all that stuff. Man, you come in with a positive attitude and get in on the ground floor, you will never regret that, because you will be one of the icebreaker, one of the groundbreakers of a new facility. Now, in a closing, let me, I know we've been here a long time. The county, we did have a very limited discussion with Bill this morning, and we have an idea that if the city, and this is no threat, no nothing, but if the city needs more time to ponder it or whatever, we could move forward with something. We could. It would not be work if the city came onboard at a later date than it would cause, we'd have to reach out and find a bigger facility. But I know you guys are talking about facilities, it was something to do with maintenance, I think, consolidating all your buildings or something or other. So perhaps you come up with a building, hey, that sounds great, I mean, let's go that route. But in the meantime, you know, I think we look at this as a positive step forward, and there was a time when Bill said the state looked on us favorably about going down this road, because that's where the funding was gonna go, towards agencies that consolidate and use the best resources, or get the best bang for their buck, and that kinda thing. So it does surprise me that they've kind of shoved it off and said, "Yeah, well, we're not gonna talk about it this year, or maybe next year, or whatever." That surprises me a little bit. And I maybe agree with Counselor Littkey on this, that maybe we gotta push some buttons or something, because the agency that you mentioned, Bill, I'm sure is funded by state tax dollars, and that's where you hit 'em, that's where you hit 'em. And so I don't know how it would even work, and I don't know if it has enough oomph in their power, whatever, to make that, you know, make a big dent in that, but that's my two cents.
Well, it sounds like somebody let the cat out of the bear, because we wanna take over your building, we're just building it, we're just letting you do all the work.
Why, you're sitting, if you, if I may? If you guys are talking about building stuff, I heard a discussion about the police training center.
The cities, we're looking at, we have deferred maintenance backlog that we need to address, including our streets and everything else, but we're gonna just, I think we're gonna do our due diligence and look at options to, you know, modernize, condense, or consolidate where we can, if it makes sense to do that. So we have to answer those questions, so there's no free lunches in it, we know that. So counselors, can you provide some guidance to the rest of your council members, maybe what we might do from here, so we can let the commissioners know what our intentions are and others in the audience. Counselor?
I would like to see some more numbers about cost savings, like how much is it actually gonna save us by going this route? And we might have already seen those, and maybe I just need a refresher, but I would, I guess, direct that we have another discussion, more of that information.
So if we do that, who do we get the numbers from? I wanna be very specific here, so that we can speed this along and not take much doing that.
Would be a good person to get numbers from, as far as cost savings.
You know, or counselor, maybe if you add a list of things, I need these questions answered, and I need this information, numbers, and then share it with everybody, so that we can come prepared, you know, and talk about these things, because otherwise, we're gonna chase the numbers and the information for a long time.
Well, we talked about owning the two facilities, and that that's a cost prohibitive, I guess, so I was more looking at how much is it saved by combining that facility? Because now we're looking at having to get more staff, and we're already having a hard time getting people to even wanna do nine-one-one dispatch, so there's just a lot of unknowns that I think need to be answered.
So I think if I misspeaking, Chief or Captain Clone, if you can hear me, you know, when you think about it, if I got it wrong, please tell me I got it wrong, but let's say we had a consolidated dispatch center, potentially then our dispatchers would be separate from the police department, located in a different building or something like that, do I have that right?
That sounds accurate, yes.
So, you know, consolidation for the city might look different than a consolidated dispatch center, so I guess it's possible we're gonna have LPD in one location and dispatchers in another location. So that could be part of the concern that Chief is hearing, I don't know, but we just need to get more information on that. But if you suggest it, I'm gonna ask that you take the lead on that, so that we can get the information. You know, if you have questions, just reach out to the commissioners or the chief or the sheriff, anybody, you know, or emergency manager back there, Mr. Hurd, he might have some information, or fire districts, you know, such as Mr. Hobbs and others, they may have some insights on it, so, counselor? I guess I would be, I'm not supportive of the consolidated, but I would support, as Chief mentioned, I think it was the second option of a shared facility. I think he brought up some good points, and to me, the city's man on the front line doesn't support it. I don't know how I can say, you know, come up with something that says, "Yes, we do need it," because I don't, I don't know a fraction of what he knows about the whole system, and I doubt anybody on this table does. So it'd be tough for me to go against our chief of police's direction.
Counselor Shor?
Thank you. I've always been supportive of the collaboration in the past, but I like Chief Cusick's idea, and I would like to actually see more of that going forward, how it looks, I mean, he gave us a lot of information, and I think that I would, I am leaning now towards that. So, not that I wanna throw this away, but I, to have something to compare to, I think I'd like to investigate more.
The shared facility?
If that's what he called it, I, yes, what his plan was. Option.
Okay, well then, counsel, I would challenge you also to maybe help in that, you know, to work with the chief and or others to gather that information, so that we can try to assemble something and bring it back for our friends at the county, so we can just take a look at it and, you know, answer some questions that they may have and we may have. So it's not, we can't, I don't think we can leave this to staff, I think we're gonna have to take an active role, because we're the decision-makers. Counselor Littkey?
Can I ask a quick question of Brett? From Commissioner.
For you, Brett.
Over here.
Oh, sorry. Sounds like a storm over there.
Sorry. I've been telequished.
That's what it's like.
My question is, because as I see it, when we look at your steps, the facility comes into play, where could you shift those to where we, joint powers agreement, we're gonna buy, we're gonna get this facility together, we're gonna move everybody in, we're gonna start consolidating equipment, but we're all gonna manage our own people, because maybe we can create separation within that building? Is that a step that's ever been so that, because we're in financial situations where we may not be able to fund it all at once, but maybe we can come together and start with a shared facility, then move into that board and governance, and then slowly pull away so that we're moving in that direction? Has that ever happened?
Yeah, I mean, as Bonnie would say, or has said, and just did say, my text to me, you know, "Project plan is not necessarily in stone, you know, it's a living document." So keep that in mind on all of this, you know, when you, you know, as you mentioned, you know, this is an opportunity, right? So this is a living document. You know, Dave asked me real quick, you know, "Arthur, what about federal grants for these kinds of comm centers?" Yeah, let's look into those. We're hooked up with a company called Lexipol that we'll hook you up with to start that process, see what's out there. There's a lot of money that, and it's heavy lift kinda money, you know, millions of dollars that can go towards facilities, you never know until you look. This is certainly an area where you might benefit from that, so let's look into that, that's an opportunity on the facility side. But, you know, getting started with the governance, getting started, you know, trying to move a plan forward, and making sure that, you know, everything that's being talked about, the chief's saying and others, you know, they're covering that. And with, you know, a collective good for the, you know, community, you know, not just right away, but, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years on, you know, that's gonna look right. And, you know, ultimately, having a separate comm center is really be, you know, the goal that you wanna have, and for so many reasons. You know, security, you know, I mean, I could talk a long time about that, but it just, it's just made the most sense across the country to have a state-of-the-art comm center that the community can really, you know, get behind and go around and grow around, I'm saying, and, you know, really provide the best service from. And, you know, talking about, you know, emergency operation centers and others, I mean, you have those, you know, keep those moving forward, you know? And, you know, the current centers might even turn into those, you know, and as backups, so to speak, and that's redundancy is a nice thing. Not all communities have it, but if you can get to it, it's a great thing to have. You know, it's just, you never, never know. Oakland just had a ma, Oakland, California just had a major issue, they're not sure why, where their CAD was, their whole dispatch comm center was out of power for like two or three hours, and they're trying to figure out, it's starting a point at someone sabotaged the backup systems to not kick in, and it's just, you know, it's not one thing, it's another. But you have to think of these things and, you know, try to avoid, you know, so.
Well, thank you, and if you could send me the information on the federal grants, I happen to be participating in some meetings next week, that I would love to ask those questions about availability, and I think rural America is kinda getting a light right now of that we need to be recognized and catch up with the propolises of the United States, so, and then also, I see this as, again, like, this is an opportunity, and I think if we can show our community that with each step that we take, if it's a shared facility and creating redundancy and bringing those resources into one facility creates savings for them, with their support, we can start looking at moving in step by step. So I'm, I'll do the work. I want our dispatchers taken care of, but I also wanna know, as Bill said, that if my kid gets hit, falls down, whatever, that I don't have to bounce to Whitcom and spend six minutes before somebody knows where I'm at. So yes, I will do the work, but I would love that federal grant information.
Yeah, I'll, either through Dave or you give me your contact info, like, I'll get you guys set up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, may I add on to what Brett was talking about?
Always.
The point about the plan being a living document is really important here. This plan was written at a point in time where, you know, as it was mentioned earlier, there was another, everybody was all together in moving forward in this direction. And even in the year that it's been, that was written, things change, and as Brett said, that is the beauty of a plan, of a project plan. There's a lot of decisions in that plan that would still need to have been made as you move forward, and it can take you down a different path. I'm not sure who had mentioned it, but to the point of, you know, the chief, your concerns are valid concerns, and we hear them nationwide, they are not, they're not new. But a lot of places, once they get into the environment, they find that maybe they weren't as big of concerns. We also don't know how those other consolidations came about. Did they have guidance? Did they have lessons learned to be able to help guide them down a path, to be able to resolve issues proactively? But ultimately, you know, unfortunately, they're in the situation that they're in currently, and it doesn't sound like they're very happy. The only other thing I would say is about co-location, and that's what shared is, something we call colocation. we call co-location. It does come with its own challenges. In, it is really important that in that environment, that there is a, there is a plan on how that is going to work. You would still have your staffing issues, because they have different, different structures. There can be an unintended consequence of friction if there is not some sort of regional commitment to that best-in-class in pay and those types of things as well, because they're going to talk to each other. And that can, you know, again, lead to some unintended consequences if those types of things are not resolved. One of the ways to work around that, though, is, and something I could see is even a positive way to at least start moving the needle forward as well, is working on the workforce challenges that you have right now while you're having governance conversations, to see if those are things can, that can be worked out. Working on the workforce aspect, on the recruiting and hiring, what is the, what are the challenges? Are there strategies to assist with overcoming those? And looking even at workforce, regionalization of a workforce? Are there things that you can come up with, that you can agree on now, like pay, benefits, a single recruiting pool, a single application, different things like that that could also help improve the current situation while you're looking at the governance and some of the other issues, trying to move forward in a positive direction for, you know, for all constituents?
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Counselor Towesley?
I just want to make sure that the, that the county knows how, how important I think, I think this is, that, that we are, we all live together, we all, we all do things together, and we have this opportunity, but we also have some challenges that have to be met so that we all feel like, like what's going to come out is going to be, there's going to be equity in that, in how it's created. I don't want to walk away from this by any means. I think there's a necessity. I'm not sure that, that what is presented as of now is the right route, and I believe that Chief Cusick has, has certainly given us a lot to think about. I'm still trying to, trying to process all of that. And I, so what I'm saying is, I don't want to walk away from this, but I don't know how to move forward at this point. I really don't. I, I, I got to think more about this, and so I'd like to have another meeting, I'd like to have some more information that, that will give me more, a, a place where I can actually say, yeah, I want to move forward in this direction. Right now, I don't know which way to go, I really don't. And I understand the need, but I also look at numbers, I'm looking at dollar signs, and I'm looking at how much we are being saddled right now as the city, and I, I just don't know how to push this one up the hill. I really don't. And so that's where I am. Thank you.
Well, Counselor, I'm going to pick on you like I picked on the other two, three. I would challenge you to meet with Chief Cusick, Captain Clone, you know, maybe visit with Sheriff Scrimshaw too, you know?
Sure.
And just get a feel for the numbers and what's going on, try to flush some more information out.
Good.
And bring it back to our next meeting, because otherwise, we're going to come back here, and we're not going to be any further down the road. It's, it's going to take.
I understand that.
All of us sitting at this table to get there, so. And you might have some different questions, you can ask them, and, you know, maybe have that aha moment or something. Like Bonnie just shared with us, it's, you know, it's a working document, and, you know, maybe we'll find a way to gain ground for both interests. I, I don't know myself, I'm going to do it too, I'm going to commit to it too, because I don't know how to push it up the hill either, but I do think we need to come out with a firm decision about what direction we're going to go.
I agree.
Connie, did you have your hands up? That was Deanna sitting there. Gosh, it was kind of hard for me to see back there.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'd second.
Well, we, we could do that, but we better finish the rest of the agenda, so I don't get in trouble with Kayla sitting in the back there. To move on to unfinished and new business, first of all, City Council comments, if you don't have any more to, some councilors, then we'll move on to mayor comments, and I just want to thank everybody for being here, I'll make a commitment to it, commissioners.
I also, Mr. Mayor.
And next is the county commissioner comments. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman?
I just want to thank you for having us. I think it's been a good discussion, a lot of things to think about, so I think if we get the information right, and we can move forward.
Yeah, I thought there was some good comments about the ERA appointment, I don't know what reconsideration would even look like, but I would encourage the council to consider those comments. I'd like to see a full ERA board, and it's not being overrun with applications, so I, I, it just, it's hard to get people to serve, especially that board. It's very complicated. I didn't even know the Michigan issue put in for it, but, or if he would even accept, but I'd encourage a reconsideration, however informed that would be. I, I did have one concern, because I had to re-watch that process, I, I'd heard some things, and there was some confusion about county residency or city residency or something, I mean, to the point where I think the attorney had to kind of weigh in on it. You know, that surprised me a little bit, because the second highest amount of money that's put into that is from the county, and so it makes sense that the county would be able to have a resident on there. So I was kind of surprised that was not known, or why it even became an issue, because you currently do have a county resident on there, did you even know that?
We can't discuss it, Commissioner, but we appreciate you bringing that up, of course. I want to honor that there's this electrical charge under my chair, and every time I do something wrong, Kayla pushes the button, and I sit up, so.
Well, my point is, I'm asking you if you would consider that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shiner?
Well, again, great discussion. I still look at things as an opportunity, no matter what was stated here today by the chief. It's just an opportunity, we need to move forward. It's one step at a time, it always has been. You start with the master plan, it's a living document, you do governance, you do this, you do that. They said the steps were overlapping, if you've ever read the plan, it, it says they could be overlapping, just remember that.
Thank you. With that, we have Counselor Towesley moved, second by Commissioner Shiner to adjourn to adjourn, so discussion, does in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.